I love people like that's always been who I am. So that's how I was even on the school board. I mean, I agree with you, but like even the people that were coming to yell at us and call us horrible humans, like the lens I would try and look at them through was like, they must have something really hard going on in their life. Or there's a reason that this emotion is coming out. You know, I once too came, I didn't yell at them, but I stood up. So they're participating in the process. Yay. Good for them. I'm excited about that. But never like this person is just an evil human being.
Welcome to the East Anchorage Book Club. I'm your host, Andrew Gray. The purpose of this podcast is to tell the stories of Alaskans of interest and importance. Today, our guest is Wasilla State House Representative Jubilee Underwood. After losing the August 2024 primary to the incumbent Representative David Eastman, few folks thought that she had a chance of winning, but come November, Underwood defeated Eastman. She is now here in Juneau forging a new path for her community. Prior to running for the house, she served three years on the Matsus School Board, the last year as the president. We talk about her journey into politics as well as her early life. Note, one of her best friends from high school, Alexi Moore, was also elected to the state house at the same time as Underwood. Moore replaced Jesse Sumner as a representative of Wasilla. You will hear us refer to Alexi by her first name at various points during today's interview. Jubilee Underwood, welcome to the podcast.
Thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here.
So I was just researching you online. You were born in your parents' house in Wasilla?
Yes, I was. My mom wanted to do a home birth. I had two older brothers. She had them in hospitals, wanted to do a home birth with me. And the midwives were late, and so my dad had to deliver me. It was a special fun moment.
Do you have any younger siblings or were you like the last one, best one?
My little sister came eight and a half years later. My mom thought she was going through menopause, found out she was pregnant and said, somebody please shoot me.
Did she have your sister?
And she had my sister at forty-one. She was forty-one when she had her.
Did she have her at?
And she had her at home and we all were actually home.
So the girls were home births?
Yes. So I watched my little sister be born actually and named her helped. My mom had a few names picked up. I helped pick the name when she.
Did you watch the baby come out?
Oh, yeah.
You watched the baby's head come out?
I watched the whole thing. I was like almost nine. I just remember I kept going to the bathroom going, gosh, I hope she would just be quiet. But it was crazy. My brothers were in the house. My aunt was there taking pictures. Like it was wild.
And your dad actually delivered you?
Yeah.
That is.
The funny part about it was because I tell people this and he was like so embarrassed, but he was just like not happy that we were the third baby was coming. He wasn't ready. Job stuff was going on. And so he was grumpy the whole pregnancy. And then the funny thing is, is he was just really nervous to have ugly girls. He said, that was his embarrassing thing. He goes, thinking back, he goes, what if I had an ugly daughter? That would be embarrassing. And so at his memorial, I joked with my brothers and I, and my sister was out there too. And I was like, and look, he was wrong. Look at my brothers. And everybody just laughed. If you knew my dad, he was like, he was really funny anyways. But yeah, so him having to deliver me was perfect. We were like instantly bonded, like mind melded. Best friends from that moment on. My mom was like, he actually annoyed everybody with how much he talked about you.
How did your parents meet?
They met actually hippie days, uh, Gerdwood, coots, when there was a coots in Gerdwood. That's where they met. I don't know if you ever knew that there was one out there. Yeah, it doesn't exist anymore. But my dad was an air force brat. And so in junior high, they were stationed in Anchorage. He loved fishing. So he said, when I turn eighteen, I am going back to Alaska. And so when he graduated, my grandpa was a colonel in the air force, landed up in Arizona at that base, retired. And then they had moved on to somewhere else for a little bit. And he was like, yeah, it's too hot here. He hitchhiked back to Alaska. My mom too, she left. I think she was in Idaho at the time and came up. She was up here in Delta Junction when she was little. And so came to Alaska too, and they met.
Were they the same age?
Yeah, they were both born in fifty-two. Right after they met, they were running a gun range. I think it was in like Sand Lake area with a bunch of friends. And their wild story is they went to a church in Mountain View. It was my uncle and aunt and some friends like, come to this revival. They're having downtown Mountain View, totally changed their lives.
Like they became born again.
Like Christians right then, at that moment. My dad was raised in Catholic church, nothing against it. But he just said he never saw people happy and having fun in church before. And he was like, what is this? People were enjoying themselves. They literally within a week, lost all their friends, stopped doing drugs, stopped drinking and moved to the valley and started a completely brand new life.
Wow. So they went to revival together, felt equally changed.
Yep. Changed. They felt like they met the Lord. They gave up all their stuff and.
And they didn't have any kids yet?
I believe they had my brother, uh, my oldest. Yes, they had my oldest brother at that point. He was just little, probably like maybe a year. Yeah.
And yeah, so I didn't ask, how much older are your brothers than you?
They're five and seven years older than me.
Okay. So that's a big spread. So five and seven, then your younger sister's eight and a half years older than you.
So I feel like I grew up with my older brothers and my little sister came. My brothers were like thirteen and fifteen when she was born. And so my mom was like, not planned, but I had one sister my whole life. So for me, my mom has blamed me. She's like, this is your fault. You prayed for a sister. I was like, I sure did. It's not my fault that she's here, but maybe I attributed. My prayers were answered. So yeah, she was like my baby. So I basically raised her. That's what I feel like.
And then they had run that gun range.
They quit that, moved out there. My dad had done carpentry. I mean, he was like a, we call him, cause his name was Joe, a Joe of all trades. He could do literally anything, but he was in the carpenters union for a little while in Anchorage. And he worked for Acme Fence for twenty years in Anchorage. And so half the fences that you see in Anchorage and all over the place, even the new guard world, like up to Bird Creek and stuff, all that new stuff, he actually did. Yeah. So he would always brag every time we drive around Anchorage. I built that fence. I built that fence. So he commuted for a long time and did odd jobs out in the valley as well, like little remodel jobs with a couple buddies of his and stuff. And so my mom, she worked at the hospital for a little while. And then she ended up just like homeschooling my brothers for a couple of years. And then worked at GCI as a long distance operator for like almost twenty years as well. And then they outsourced and so she.
Did she homeschool you?
For just kindergarten. She was not built to be a homeschool mother. She was like, nope. Yep. Put us in school. So.
And so you went to public school in Wasilla?
I actually went to a Christian school out in Palmer.
Okay.
Yep. Started in Palmer and the little school there had moved buildings a few times, but my dad and mom just, they sacrificed to keep us there. It was small, but it was awesome. I know people probably in grades ahead of me and behind me didn't necessarily love our school, but I had the best classmates, I feel like. And I still are like lifelong friends with a lot of those people that I went to school with.
And Alexi went to that school?
She did. She came in, I think ninth grade is when she showed up.
You were two years ahead.
Yeah, but we were on the same sports team, same, all the things. It's a small crowd. So we all hung out together. But yeah, that's where we met. It's crazy.
It is crazy. All four kids went to the Christian school?
We did. Uh, my brothers graduated. I graduated. My sister went through sixth grade. The school kind of fell apart. It's no longer exists. And so then she ended up going out to Houston. So she was the first one of us to experience public school. And she went for a few years. She ended up not liking it. She switched to Wasilla for a semester and then she actually wanted to do homeschool. She, my sister is actually in outpatient recovery. It's not a secret. We all talk about it very openly. When she actually went to public schools, when she was introduced.
Your sister's in recovery in?
In Wasilla. Yep. She's in her outpatient. She actually just got a job doing peer support at a recovery treatment center. Got her a car and she's doing amazing. So yeah, her, my nephew that I have with me, that's her son.
Oh, gotcha. So you graduated from that Christian school before it fell apart?
Yep.
And that in Palmer, and then what happened?
And then I knew, so I was like, not salutatorian, but salutatorian. We had a small class, like nine of us. So the kid that like beat me by a few, like four point five, and I was like four point one or something.
You were saluted. You were second.
Yeah, I was second. So he, his parents were gonna make him go to college no matter what. And back then UAA had that top ten percent got a scholarship. So we were like, we have nine kids, one kid's getting a scholarship. But I never had any desire to go to college, even though I like looked into it, I researched. I even sent like my basketball stuff to like UNLV at one point and was like, maybe I'll go play basketball. Cause that was, that was like my passion. But our school, since it was a Christian school, we went down and did missions trips every year that I was in high school down to Guatemala. In Guatemala. Yep. Cause our school helped start a Christian school down there. And then so we just built relationship for years.
Does that school still exist?
Yeah, the, yeah.
The one in Guatemala?
There's multiple actually, but the connection that we had there, he runs multiple ones up in a village called La Tinta. So my principal actually went and started a group home for girls there, like an orphanage for girls. And she had her hands in a ton of stuff there. And so we would go and visit her every year. And so I knew I wanted to go do missions of some capacity. And so since I'd already been there, I wanted to go help there. So I went and worked in for six months in Guatemala in that girl's home. Which for being in a third little country, for girls to get taken out of their home for abuse, it has to be extremely severe for the government down there to recognize it. So the girls had extreme heartbreaking stories. And um, yeah, that's where my, my first experience with all of that was. And so I was like a big sister. I was the first kind of intern they had there. So they were just like, I don't, I don't know what to do exactly. So I just helped with their lunches and cleaning. And um, was basically just a big sister to them. And it was amazing. So I did that. And then while I was down there, I felt like I was supposed to go to this. It used to be like a nine month ministry school that was in the valley that didn't exist anymore. And so I just really felt like, I was like, I'm gonna contact the people that ran it. And they said that I was like the ninth person to tell them that. So they actually reopened that fall for all nine of us. And so we did, it's just like a personal, non-denominational Christian school, ministry school. We did a lot of outreach. And we went over around Alaska and just did mission stuff here and there. And.
So it was like basically a nine month program, like.
Yep. It was just a one year. No, no certifications, nothing. It was just for personal growth in your faith. Yeah. You get a test, like reaching out, doing different projects in the community. There was like Love Inc. was really big back then in Wasilla and shelters and just things like that, just reaching out and doing community type engagement and just working on yourself, getting character development.
You were like nineteen?
Yeah, I was actually like eighteen still. And then I didn't want to do a second year. I was like, I want to go into the workforce. And so I ended up working for Alaska Airlines and leaving my graduation night, graduated and left for Seattle to train for customer service for Alaska Airlines. And I was there for seven years and.
Okay. So you worked customer service for seven years?
Yep.
How was that?
It was great. I loved it. Sadly, the company changed in their management structure, like a few years into us working there. And I say us, cause Alexia made her work there too, for a very short time. She should like showed up after for six months. And then she was like, no, I'm not commuting. Bye. And so we worked there for, yeah.
Cause you were commuting to Seattle?
To Anchorage, from the valley.
Got it.
But I ended up moving into Anchorage for four years, cause for the commute. And then, yeah, so they switched. It used to be like super family friendly, the supervisors, management were awesome. And then it's something happened where they turned into this production machine where it was like, everything's about on time departure, this and that. And it shifted from like quality service, this is my own personal opinion, to very much like just get the job done, check our boxes, we can win the awards type thing. So that the culture there seemed to shift a little bit. So.
It wasn't as fun?
It was not. The, the management structure shifting, yeah, was definitely like, oh, this is more businessy. It was like more fun when I started. And so I did that. And then I also worked at an eye surgery center about four years into it. So I worked, I did both jobs for a long time. So I worked and did both.
Like front desk or?
I did a lot of things there. I actually started in surgery. It's cataract and laser surgery. I did all the prepping of people's eyeballs when they came back, prepped all the tools. And then we would go from one room to the next. Our surgeon would do sixty surgeries in one day. And he could do cataract surgery in a few minutes. So it was like a really hard one that it sometimes take a little bit longer, but I would just be running from room to room and patient to patients. It was like super fast paced, super fun. I had my son while I was at Alaska Airlines.
Did you meet your husband while you were at Alaska Airlines?
No, I actually met him when I was seventeen.
Really?
The, the summer before my senior year. So I'd met him. He was living in Anchorage. And we had a mutual friend that introduced us to each other.
That liked love at first sight?
For me. He said, I looked like I was like twelve years old. He said, what intrigued him was cause you know, I was from the valley. I was tomboy. Like I didn't wear makeup. I was thrift store clothes. And he went to a bunch of different public schools and he was, this girl's looks a little different than the rest of the girls I'm used to, like.
So he was born and raised in Anchorage?
Yeah. So he was like, yeah, he just seemed a little different. I was like, probably it's from the valley. We're a little different out there.
So for you, it was like love at first sight, but not so much. Had they all start dating right away?
No, I'm sure we just, we were talking.
You exchanged numbers?
Exchange numbers, talking back and forth on and off. It's for forever. And then when I started working at Alaska Airlines and I moved into Anchorage, then I got pregnant with my son. Like that first year.
Got it.
I was twenty, turning twenty-one. So, yeah. Yep. So that was a big surprise and.
And y'all got married then?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Oh, that's so interesting. So you had the first baby?
Through it. Yeah. Cause it wasn't planned. We started off a little rocky and um, obviously, cause you get pregnant, that's not a reason to necessarily jump in and get married and fix everything. So yeah, we had to work through a lot of stuff. We didn't get married till Jace was ten years old.
Really?
Yeah.
And how many kids did y'all have together?
Two.
Two.
We had a big gap. We got eleven year gap. Um, we were married when we had our daughter. So I felt like we had our fresh start, got married. And then the year late after that, I got pregnant with June. And so, yeah, eleven year gap.
So interesting.
It was wild.
So did y'all live together with your son?
We didn't at first. He's a pastor's kid. And so like, when we were living in Anchorage, like we were still living in different families homes. And obviously we weren't married, so they didn't want us to live together.
What was his family's reaction to you getting pregnant?
I mean, they already had some, another nephew in the family that was born and they weren't married yet either. We weren't the first ones. They were, they were super accepting. It just was, it was just like, I mean.
But there was no pressure from their side that you guys should get married?
No.
He should get married to you?
No. No pressure on anybody's side. Neither parent's side. Everybody was very supportive. Well, mom, so in the beginning, my parents, they got married at a courthouse twenty days before they had my older brother. This was still their wild child days. And so my mom.
So they had barely gotten married?
Barely gotten married. And so my mom was more so like.
For the record, my, my parents, my mom was pregnant with me when she got.
Oh, yeah.
And she got married to my dad.
Okay. So here's the real part of the story. It was my last mission trip to Guatemala. And it was like a thrown together one that we did with people that went with us a long time ago. My mom, my dad, my little sister came. We did like our own throw together. And then one of my roommates from Anchorage, which was my very first friend in life, like we grew up together in the same church together. She was there too. So it was like a hodgepodge group of people, but they were moving from the city to a village where they had bought a ton of land. So they needed help prepping their first house. And they're gonna grow a big orphanage, have a school, have a whole onsite thing. So we were the first group there to go help start that. And I was not feeling good. And I was like, either have a parasite or something is on.
So this is while you were in Guatemala? You thought maybe you ate something or drank some water?
I was hoping that that was the case. So we go from the, we go from the city, but then we go up to the village as well, just to go see the people that we helped originally start the schools and all that with. And my roommate from Anchorage was there with me and she goes, I had a dream. I had a dream that Gene came in, which is my husband, to our apartment who was throwing baby stuff everywhere. And he wasn't very happy. So we were supposed to take malaria pills when we got up. But she was like, don't take your malaria pills. And she was like, and I won't take mine either. We go together. And I was like, don't tell me that. I'm not breathing. Don't tell me that. And yeah, when we got back from that, I was actually, I was sicker. So I went to go see if I had a parasite. So that's my joke. I'm like.
But they did a pregnancy test?
I did. It was my child instead. Yeah, that was wild. So my mom was more not like disappointed in me. She was more like sad because I felt like that's how she, she got her footing in life.
So she was just disappointed that you were gonna start the same thing?
And, and just didn't want me to struggle and all that. And me and my dad are super close, right? So I just said, you're gonna have to tell dad. I can't.
And had they met Gene already?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Cause I was nineteen.
They liked him?
They met him like only once.
Before this?
Because they never came to the valley. Anchorage people don't go to the valley unless you're going to the fair. And I had left for Guatemala. My life was like not, I wasn't like in this relationship day in and day out. I was doing the ministry school. So I was like.
And when, when they met him, had you introduced him as your boyfriend?
No, he was not yet. Because I was right, they met him right before I went to go, right after high school to go live in Guatemala for six months. He came to pick me up and took me to the airport.
So that's when they met him?
That's when they met him. Yep. For the first time. And yeah, cause we weren't like, we weren't like, hey, you're my boyfriend, you're my girlfriend. We were still just hanging out and.
And you don't have to talk about this if you don't want to, but I, I'm like skirting around the edges. Did it bother them that he was black?
No, not at all.
Not at all?
So this is what, this is when my, my mom told my dad, I remember it like yesterday, I'm walking in the sky bridge to go to Fifth Avenue Mall. And my dad calls me and I'm like, oh, I don't want to take this. I'm in public. He's all, yeah. So your mom just told me what's going on. He's all, we can't do anything about it now. So might as well be happy. And he said he had a dream six months prior that there was a little light skinned boy with Timbs on and a puffy vest running around his backyard. And my dad always wanted black children. Like he always wanted to like, his best man was African American. Like he just, he grew up in other states that weren't Alaska. So that was like, his culture was like Spanish and African American. And everybody was just, yeah, not just white in his circle. And so he was actually super excited. He's all, I get my little grandchild after all. Yay. I cried and I was like, thanks dad. Cause then your dad's like supportive of you. That's huge. So he was just like, we're gonna get through it whenever it's life. He was like, people make mistakes, but that doesn't mean the result's a mistake. And so he was just like, yeah.
So in the context of your mom being disappointed, not for any other reason other than that she didn't want you to have it as hard as she had. Were they supportive of you guys waiting ten years to get married? Cause it.
Oh, no, they wanted, they would have loved us to get married sooner.
Okay.
Just because we were like together.
And so it was almost making it more difficult to do two separate houses, not living together?
Yeah. I mean, we ended up, we ended up living together before we got married, but moving back and forth. And it's just, our relationship is just like a lot of others. We had to work through a lot of things before we got there. I would have loved to have been married sooner as well. And just didn't lead that way.
And your husband was a hairdresser during this period?
So when I was in Guatemala, the very first time after high school, that's when him and his twin went to go and get their license for barbering. Their plan was they'd always cut their friends hair in high school. So they're like, we'll get our barber's license and then we'll go to college. My husband wanted to do like forensic science or criminal forensic stuff. That's what intrigued him the most. But then when they were in hair school, they realized actually, they're actually really good at women's hair and coloring. And this lady in Anchorage that's really well known, she is now passed away, but she was like anybody in the hair world in Alaska, I feel like knew her. But she came in to do a class, saw them and as soon as they graduated, took them both as like interns under her wing and they just took off. And so they did women's hair for, forever. And then just in recent years, last six years, they just went straight into barbering. They both still have their clientele that they've done for women's hair for years. But the bulk of their work is at the barber shop. Cause it's like, we're getting older, it's easier and they can do men's hair so fast. And yeah, a lot of people here in Juneau actually get their hair done by then. Cause it's a lock and shop. Yeah. They're like, wait, your husband has the hair. I'm like.
So you guys ended up getting married, had your daughter?
Yep.
And when did y'all relocate to the valley?
I went to Anchorage for five years. Jace was going into kindergarten. When I moved out there, we needed family help and for school and both of our jobs. And so Gene, his sister had cancer and ended up, she ended up passing away from cancer and we were all very close. And so she had watched.
She must have been really young.
Yeah. She was, oh man, this was in two thousand twelve. Jace was about six or five. And yeah, she was watching him like before he went into school. And so she couldn't anymore. So then my um, father-in-law was watching him for a little bit as well. And then they all, I mean, he had to go back to work. And then what was going on with the family was just too much. And so I was like, I need help. Cause I'm working two jobs. My husband was working multiple jobs as well. And so I just moved back to, till we could figure out.
Into your parents' house?
Yeah. And so they helped get into and from school while I commuted.
And I guess your sister would have been in high school?
She was, oh man, she was little when he was born. She graduated shortly, maybe a couple of years.
I guess the point was is that when you moved back into your parents' house.
She was still there.
She was. Okay.
Yeah. Yep. For a little bit. And I had an aunt that was living there as well. My parents' house was like the catchall for anybody. Yeah. My aunt was actually struggling with addiction on and off my whole life. And she lived with my parents on and off my whole life as well. She was like a bigger sister.
Is she still living around?
She is not. She actually died from suicide shortly. Maybe it was like eight years ago now, seven years ago. Yeah. It was, that was hard. But yeah.
Did that happen while you were living with your parents?
Yep. She had moved down to Arizona to go be with some friends, get in the sun, do better. And then that housing situation didn't work out. And my sister was in the throes. She had her, she had just had her baby, but then she was in the throes of addiction. And so my aunt had called my mom and just being like, I don't know where I'm gonna go. And my nephew was like screaming in the background and my mom was like, I just don't know if I have space here.
So your nephew is not that much younger than your oldest son?
My nephew is only nine. So this was like eight years ago that my aunt ended up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So he was only like a baby when this had happened.
And Jace was like seven?
He must have been like.
How old is Jace now?
Eighteen.
Oh, my God. You have an eighteen year.
Yes. He's eighteen. He'll be nineteen this summer.
Okay. So that tells us how old you are. Cause you had him when you were twenty?
Twenty-one is when I had him.
Oh.
Yeah. I'll be forty in May. Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. I barely turned twenty-one. I was seven months pregnant on my twenty-first birthday.
Okay. That should do everything. I thought you were like thirty-five.
Oh, I'll take that. Thank you. Appreciate that. I was like, I feel eighty-five, but yeah.
Okay. So um, your aunt had gone down to Arizona, your sister.
Was in the throes. She just had my.
Had a baby?
Yep.
She was in the throes of addiction. The baby was in the house too.
Yeah. My parents were raising him basically. My dad was like his dad basically during that time. And so my mom was just like, I don't know if I have space here, but let me figure it out. And my aunt was like, I'm not asking to come back there. Just, it was some miscommunication thing, but I think my aunt felt like she just didn't know what she was gonna do. And then went to a motel and got really intoxicated and took her life. And so I, my mom was like, you should have called her like a few days before that. And I was like, this isn't the first time she said, you know, I'm gonna do this or whatever. And I was like, I'll call her. She's gonna be fine. There was a bunch of little things like that. Each of us thought like, man, what if I would have been the one to call her, to talk her out of this? My mom's like, well, I'm the one, was the last one to say something to her. So it's my fault. Like we all struggled with that, her son as well. Their relationship was on and off, not that great. And so he also thought, everybody just struggled. Oh my gosh, this was our fault. So we had to work through that. But.
I, I, I have an older brother I lost to addiction. And I was living in Europe at the time. And he had called a week before and like I'd answered the phone at three in the morning. And he was, and I was, and he was like, hey, what are you doing? Whatever. I was like, I'm sleeping. Because it's three in the morning. It's three in the morning. I was like, yeah, there's a huge time change. And he was like, time change? And I felt really bad because I felt like I cut the conversation really short. But you know, if you knew that was the last call.
Right. And yeah, if you only, I'm like, cause I could always talk her off of it. I could get through to her, I feel like above a lot of people. I could. And I feel like I was just annoyed. That's just the regret part is that I was annoyed. Like she's doing it again. She's not gonna go through anything like this. Just give me a few days. I'll call her and talk her out of it. And it's one of those things that's wow, I could have been the one to say something. That was really hard to swallow for many years, but yeah.
Um, so you eventually moved out of your parents' house?
I'm still there. No, I'm just kidding. No. I moved my mom down here with me, right? So I just take the, I take them all with me. No, we did. We ended up getting a little place and then getting married that next year. So out in the valley, we were like, we gotta make this work. Jace was ten years old and we were like, okay, obviously we're not gonna stay separated for forever. We're still together making this work. Let's finally move forward.
Where did Jace go to school?
He went to, he went to Anchor Lutheran for two years of preschool and we were in Anchorage, cause they had that full-time preschool. It's very expensive. But that's why I worked two jobs, but it was awesome. He loved it. And then starting kindergarten, he started there for like just a month or two. When I was like, I need extra help. So he went out to the neighborhood school right by my parents' house, Kinnick-Guspe for a year. But my friend was actually the teacher of that class, which was great. Cause I didn't know, I'm, I was like, he went from private school to this. What am I gonna do? And then where we moved, we um, put him into a really good like STEM school, which was Moketons, which is, has a really good um, STEM program out in the valley.
So it's like a public charter school?
No, it's just public school. They just, yeah. But when they opened it, so many like teachers that had been teaching for like twenty years all moved there. So there was just a lot of knowledge in the building. So it was a, a spot where a lot of people wanted to put their kids.
And you happened to be living right there. Oh, you purposely moved there?
That little area. His sister at the time, right before she passed away, her and her husband had bought a house right behind the school too. We had this plan. She would be able, if we were working, she could watch him after school and whatnot. And they closed.
Did she have cancer?
Yeah. They closed on the house and she never got to move in. She passed away shortly after they closed on it. Yeah. So that's why I quit Alaska Airlines. It was that year and I was like, stayed every night in the hospital with her. Cause we never wanted her to be alone in the hospital. And there is like shift work, like you have to trade your shifts away. And so I had traded all the ones I needed. But at that one point in time, we were opening up another station and whoever was working my shifts, thought they got somebody else to cover for them. And then they didn't show up. And so that fell back on me. And they're like, oh, this thing called trade jail, where you can't trade your shifts for a month. And I'm like, that's not gonna work. I have to be at the hospital. And I knew I wanted to quit anyways. I got to that point where you're just feeling like, this isn't for me anymore. And so it was union. And at that point, there was no Janus decision. You couldn't un-unionize yourself. You had to be a part of it. And I was like, you can give me a worse step punishment, which would actually let me still trade them away. But the union was like, no, we can't. You have to do the steps. And I was like, okay, well, bye. It's my last day. And they're like, what? I was like, you guys didn't hire till spring. There's no two weeks here. It's union. You do, you have to wait. So. I was like, so I just walked out. I was, never regretted it a day in my life, but I loved the coworkers. I missed that, but the work part, it was time to be over. I actually worked with Dunlovey's wife for seven years. So that's when I met Rose. Yeah. We worked together. She was one of my favorite coworkers. So she was there when I had my son, cause I was pregnant while working at Alaska Airlines, had my son there. And so all those ladies had to walk me through a lot of life.
Wow, that is.
Yeah.
Very interesting life experience.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so, and that was eighteen years ago. So that was like two thousand and seven.
Yeah. I worked there from two thousand and five to two thousand and twelve.
Okay. You've got the little house near the school?
Yeah, just a little apartment. We were just renting a little tiny apartment. Um, he was doing hair out there.
So he was.
Oh, no. He had got, so we had, we were shifting life to go to the valley. He had started working at a salon and then, cause his sister was gonna buy a house. And now he wouldn't be in the valley alone. We were bringing more family out with us. We had this plan that we was gonna work. And then when she passed away, it kind of just, yeah, it was really hard.
And your husband was always cool with moving to the valley?
No. I don't know any of my Anchorage friends that back then ever wanted to move to the valley. They were like, what? The valley? It just made it easier that like, seeing I think my community of friends and family and engagement and the school my son was in and how much. and the school my son was in and how much help, like my family has just always been super helpful. Like whenever we need something, my, my dad especially could just drop.
Yeah, cause your mom's in June now.
Yeah, she's with me now, helping with my kids now. But, but my dad was like the pillar, like anytime you need him, and he didn't matter.
How long ago did you lose your dad?
Four years ago next month.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, thanks. That was, that was wild.
Yeah.
Unexpected. But, so yeah, but his sister, since she was gonna be moving out there, we had this good plan. It was gonna be, it was more palatable.
Right.
And so it was just gonna work better for all of us to be there with the help.
I just imagine it would be really hard to be African-American and moving into the valley because it just seems like there's less diversity there.
There is, but thank God, there is more and more with our military and more diversity because the housing is cheaper out there. So we have a lot of people that instead of buying or living on base are actually moving to the valley and buying real estate because it's a shorter commute right there. That school that I was talking about has a huge military community, military and state workers. Cause it's right off the highway and you can get right onto the flats right there. And he's got his twin brother that's like his best friend and everything. So it doesn't have like a huge group of friends that he was leaving to come out there for. But yeah, I think the fact.
Cause his twin brother's sitting in Anchorage.
Yes. Yep. But now they work together at the same barber shop. So.
In Anchorage?
Yes. So they get to see each other a lot. Yeah. So, and it's nice. It's not as bad. I feel like once you're out there, you get used to it. The commute isn't what, as bad as you think it was. That's like the biggest thing. You're like, it's gonna take forever to drive in and out.
I, I worked at the Wasilla VA, but I was doing a reverse commute. So yeah, I didn't mind it. It was very easy. Except that commute is not fun in January or February. If it's snowing and I can't figure out if I'm on the road or if I'm driving on the shoulder, literally sometimes you don't know. You don't know. You're following whatever the car in front of you is, or you could see no lines.
Yes.
Could see. It's scary.
It is. It is. And it's gotten better. But when I was there, there was lots of stretches that didn't even have lights when I was growing up. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, the roads have improved a little bit. Just a tiny bit.
When did you get your real estate license?
Ten years ago. So after Alaska Airlines, I always tried to make sure I had a backup plan for work. I've never not been without a job. And I was working at the eye clinics. I had some medical experience. I had a friend that owned a physical therapy place in Wasilla. So I'd reached out to them. I was like, are you guys hiring? And they're like, if you're applying, then yes. So they were like, we'll pay you this much. We'll do this. You still come do the regular interview process with everybody. But if it works out, yes. So I had quit both those jobs and went full-time at that facility for a while. And I had a girlfriend that had been poaching me for like three years to get into the business. And I was like, I don't wanna do a real estate. What? I had no paradigm for what that looked like and whatnot. And finally, I was like, I need to make some more money in another job. And I was like, I'll just try it out. So I started, but I kept my full-time job. So I did both. And it was a lot of work and really stressful, but I did both for a few years, just to make sure like I would have enough clientele. Or if I did, take that risk.
You'd actually sell houses.
Self-employed. But you're like, you don't have insurance. You have nothing. You're just, that's a huge risk. You don't know if you're gonna sell. Nothing's guaranteed. But I had worked up enough that I finally made the leap. And yeah, so been fully self-employed then for the last maybe eight, eight years? Did I make the jump? So I've been licensed for ten, but yeah.
I don't know how it works because you work for like a company, right? Like.
So yeah, you get licensed and you always have to have your license at a brokerage. You could apply to have your own broker's license. Then you could open your own thing, but no way I would ever want to do that. But I worked with them because they helped me get licensed. I worked with them for four and a half years.
And what was the brokerage that you?
It was the Kristen Cole team. I was out in, out in the valley, but she was one of the big wigs out there that had been around for a really long time. And so they had a lot of clientele, which was nice. So working for them though, I was only a buyer's agent. They had like buyer's agent and then my girlfriend that was the broker under her mom, she did all the listings. And so I only had the experience as a buyer's agent. I was like, okay, I wanna experience more. And so that's when I ended up stepping out and moving to a different brokerage where I could be fully like on my own. At there, it was like a team. Yeah, I was always with a team.
So does that mean that you also share?
Yeah.
The money?
Yes, you do. Most like, it's like, depending on your brokerage splits, everybody's different, but it could be like fifty-fifty. It could be forty-sixty. I mean, you could work your way up, just depending how the broker does it. But I got a lot of knowledge, a lot of training. I learned so much. And yeah, then I stepped out and it was life-changing stepping out. Cause it was almost like, because when you're on a team, depending how they structure, it was still almost like going to a nine-to-five. I was still going to there, doing stuff at the office. And when I stepped out on my own, it was completely me managing all my own time, my own schedule, who I worked with. Yeah. And I got to do the listing side of things as well, which is very different from the buying side. And I was just able to have a lot more freedom to do what I wanted to do to begin with, to get into real estate, which was, I was a fanatical sports mom. Cause my son has always been in sports and I was in sports, my husband was in sports. And so just to travel and.
And so you had the freedom to make sure you went to every game, that you could travel to away games, you could.
I could, we went out of state a lot for camps and for tournaments and travel teams and AAU. Like we were always gone. But I could, A, I mean, when you're working for yourself, you actually get to keep majority of your checks. So I could make more, work less. So that was life-changing for our family unit. Cause I feel like we've just been in such like workload, both of us. Like I've worked since I was like thirteen years old.
Like struggling.
Non-stop work. But I mean, I paid for my own stuff. It's created a really hard work ethic. But just having a little bit more freedom where we could cultivate more family time was life-changing for all of us for sure. Especially welcoming my daughter into the world. It was great because I was like, I can actually, with Jace, I just took the minimum, like maternity leave off and went right back to work. And then with my daughter, I could take as much time as I needed. Or I could take her with me as a baby to actually work with me and go show houses and do listings. And I could do both at the same time. It was just night and day experience from having my son so young, not married. And then us being married. And yeah, we, we got to experience both gambits. I have a lot of perspective and empathy for a lot of people going through.
So I wanna get to the politics, like running for school board.
Yeah.
You lost your dad before you ran for school board or was it around that?
It was the same year. So I talked with him about it. I'm thinking I'm gonna do this. It was during COVID time. It's when, and he was still there when I went to my first school board meeting and spoke. But what got me there was, you know, a sports mom and I just didn't want my son to wear masks during basketball. It was silly. All their masks were flying off. They were putting them on their chins. They were touching each other with their sweat. It was just like silly. None of the sports community wanted that either. It's like so hard to breathe with it on while we're running. And so that is what got me to my first.
So you went to your first school board meeting to testify?
Testify against it.
That they should get rid of the mask mandate for sports, school sports.
Yeah. Or, well, in my opinion, all of it. But yes, I'm like, everybody just do what they wanna do. If you wanna wear a mask, then you'll be fine, right? If it works, you'll be fine. So everybody just do what they wanna do. And I had no idea how any of it worked. I voted whenever it was time to vote. That was the most that I participated or had researched. The presidential candidates.
But you voted for school board people.
I still would vote, like locally.
I'm gonna confess something.
Yeah.
I, like twenty eighteen, maybe, I remember getting my ballot in the mail for the Anchorage municipal election and for school board. Like I literally had to go to a computer. I didn't know any of the names. So I had to go to a computer and Google all of them.
Yeah.
It's just such a funny thing. Cause once you're in politics, you live and breathe this stuff and you think everybody's living and breathing it. People are Googling your name right before they bubble it in.
One hundred percent. That was the, I was, I was the one that actually just, because my parents would do the research.
So you would just whatever they say.
Mom, dad, who do I vote for? What do I do about the judges? We don't know. We just did what the parents did. That was the way that we all voted. What my generation of my friends and my sisters was like, okay, who are our parents voting for? We all had the same, you know, belief systems or like ideals for.
You think your parents were like hippies? Were they hippie Republicans when they were in Gerdwood and Acton?
My parents did not. They were not involved in anything political. Nope. Neither of them were at all. And they were probably at the same time researching right before as well, for the longest time. And then it's, yeah. So there's the same thing. They're like, all right, who lines up more with what we believe? Okay, cool. That person. That's the extent of it.
So your dad knew that you'd gone and testified to the.
Yes, he was there for that. And then he got sick.
With COVID?
He did have COVID, him and my mom both at the same time. And this was in April of twenty twenty-one. Yep. And then his oxygen just got super low. So it went and got like a little.
And he didn't have asthma or anything?
He had like diabetes and other stuff, but it was like the type two where he could get his A1C down if he just ate right in two months, which.
Was his A1C down at the time or do you remember?
I don't think it was. It wasn't like super high, but it wasn't. And he'd, since he was doing carpentry for years and years, his lungs weren't always the best anyways.
And he was like fifty?
No, he was sixty-nine.
Oh, your dad was sixty-nine when he died?
Yeah.
Okay. Man, I am so bad.
Yeah, that's okay. It feels like it though. It feels like he was super young.
Yeah.
Super young and able-bodied for sure. But he got in there and then he ended up dying of pneumonia also because they put him on a vent. And when they gave him just the mask of oxygen, he was better. And I feel like I literally could have taken him out at that time.
Oh, but they put him on that later because they felt like he wasn't getting, that he wasn't breathing right or?
Yeah. And they were just, oh.
Is that Matsu?
It was. Yeah. I have a lot, I have a lot to say about that. And I don't know if you want to put on record or not on record.
I mean.
It was, yeah, I felt, I almost felt like it was coerced, but not that.
That was very early. That was early. Were you guys allowed to go in and see him?
At that point, no, but I am very annoying. And when I want something, I'm going to get it done. And so there was a certain time when, that was when people were just now getting transfusions. They were doing the plate.
Yeah, it was like that monoclonal antibodies.
Yep. All the stuff. And it was just a few, but not, they weren't doing it in the hospital yet. The high doses of vitamin D, all the things. And I had asked for a lot of those things and I was just told, oh no, that's not part of the protocol. We can't do that. And I was like, well, if it was your dad, would you do it? And I got different answers from different doctors. There was one thing where they had a vial of some type of medicine, but it was at Providence. And I made some phone calls and had somebody actually go get it at like midnight and they tried it, but it was a little bit too late. And they gave him the remdesivir and.
But were you there with him?
At, at the, we were allowed to come in at, and like look through the glass at first for, so I would, we would do that. Because I had friends that worked at the hospital and we were some of the first families that were allowed to go back there. And then when he was passing away, they let, because they ended up blowing a hole through his lung. So this is the crazy part. It's like I knew the night before he was gonna blow a hole in his lung. And I was like, I'm gonna call there. I'm just gonna call there to ease my mind because I know they're not gonna be able to listen to me. And I just said, that machine's up way too high. It's up too high. I know it is. I can feel it in my body. It's up too high. It needs, it needs to be turned down. I know you're not going to, but I just had to say this. So it's on the record that I at least tried. And lo and behold, that morning they blew a hole in his lung. It was up too high. And they saved him, but it was that day that they were like, you need to come in. And then we were all allowed to be in the room with him when he was going. And so I made sure everybody else said their stuff and I wanted to go last. And so, yeah, that's when I, I went last and we were all in there when he passed away. It was just insane.
Do you feel like that activated you more politically? Is that?
Oh, one hundred percent.
And that's indirectly led you to run for school board?
No, it was like, okay, I have one life to live. My whole world was just completely changed and shattered. My dad and me, we talked, we talked in texts twenty times a day. He was at my house or I was at his house with the kids. Like every day, every other day, like super, super involved in our lives. So it's like for all of us, it was like our whole lives were. As my sister ended up relapsing, she had just graduated from her first inpatient, was doing amazing two months prior to him passing away. And so she had relapsed right after he passed away because she was like, felt like her second chance was gone in life and all the regret. And yeah, no, I was like, all right, I'm gonna do this because I went from like kinda being a people pleaser type personality type. I didn't like conflict. I just liked peace with everything. I'm a peacemaker. And my dad was not that way. He was very much like, hey.
More confrontational.
Oh, very like, but people loved him. He did it in a really loving, roundabout way. And people were like, gosh, your dad just says it like it is. But then like he gives you a dad hug at the end and just like, all right, love you and be on your way. And so I felt like when he passed away, some of that transferred over to me where I was like, I don't care what people think about me, honestly. If I feel in my heart, I'm actually doing the right thing for the right reasons, then I'm okay with that. And if people don't like it, they don't like it. It was a massive shift in just even my personality and just the way I approached everything. So I just, if I die tomorrow, I wanna leave a legacy. My dad has left a giant like impression on all of us. Like I wanna do that because I could die tomorrow. I don't know.
How did your mom handle it?
It was really hard for all of us. It still feels like it was yesterday. And eighty years ago, all at the same time. It's weird. Like time has forever changed. And so for her, it's a lot of regret where you're like, I wish we would have been able to do this and I wish we would have been able to do that. Like they were just now entering like, they wanted to go.
Retirement years.
Yeah. Go do fun things and didn't get that opportunity. So just, she's had a lot of regrets since then about just stuff that she wished that she could have done. Like anytime anybody passes away, you wish she could have done stuff. But yeah, she's ready to go, to be honest. She's just like, it's my time, my time. I'm ready. I wish I would have went first. She's happy to help with us, but it's lonely. My dad was the life of the party, the fun. And so her life is just completely hermited up a little bit, which is, yeah, it's sad to see.
Did your sister have other kids?
Nope.
No, just the one nephew?
My nephew.
And you have him?
Yeah. Yeah. But she'll be with us as soon as we get back. Her, her program should be done right then. Yeah, we talk all the time. She's doing amazing. So.
That's good.
Yeah. Super excited to have her back.
So you ran for school board. Were you running against an incumbent? I don't know anything about your school board rate.
Mine was not an incumbent. She was stepping down. And so she was like one of the only ladies that had been on for forever. And so I was gonna run. Nobody had their name in the hat, but then she recruited somebody.
She did not endorse you?
No. Nope, she didn't. And yeah, so we were.
Did you meet with her? Did you seek her endorsement or did?
Nope, not at all.
Cause you were not a fan?
I never paid attention to be honest, but I just knew probably policy-wise, we probably didn't align the same way politically. But I never paid attention to what the school board was doing, to be honest. I didn't even know that half of them up there agreed with me with the mask stuff. They just, I don't know if they knew what to do or.
Were you a registered Republican?
Yeah.
And had you always been?
Yeah, my whole life.
But you hadn't really thought about it?
Never. I have been to Washington DC multiple times. And when I go there, this is very strange. It's one of my favorite places to visit in the entire United States. I absolutely love Washington.
Oh, I love DC.
I love it so much. I'm like, oh my gosh. It's never, I thought that I wanted to be there, but like, I've known people that have went into office. And I'm always like the encourager friend. So I just thought, oh, maybe that's my drawing to it. I'm just gonna encourage people and I'll be their support system. That's where my heart was. Like I actually, I really have a big heart for justice. And that's my little sister's name, by the way. That's why I named her that. And so that is, that's just why I thought I was drawn to it. I'm like, oh man, I love justice and I just wanna see peace in, in our society. So yeah, no idea that this would ever happen, but I just, my mindset was, I don't wanna be a Facebook ninja warrior. And if I can play some kind of a part in learning this process, then maybe I can bring about some kind of change. That was just my mindset.
But isn't it interesting how, you know, as somebody who's fairly new to politics, actually you, you've been doing this longer than me.
Which is wild.
But when I started, you know, that Facebook ninja stuff, I mean, I was, I participated, I did a lot of social media.
Yeah.
trolling and dragging and stuff. Exact same things that used to say other people, they're saying it to you.
Oh, yeah.
You're all crooked. You're all botched. You're all, you know.
So wild. That was the silver lining about my dad passing away because that year, and that's the year I ran, I didn't care if I lived or died. That's where my mental was. Like I'm gonna do this and I don't care what you say to me. You're not gonna hurt my feelings. I just lost the most important person to me. There's nothing else that's gonna hurt me in this world. Like it was almost the blessing that that's the reason I was because it was COVID times. I was called like online, like you're a child killer. Every day, somebody was saying something. And I remember sitting on Lexi's couch and we would read the comments. And we would just laugh. We were just like, oh my gosh, can you believe this is what is going on? We would just laugh. You have to have some kind of hard protective shell in your emotions to be able to handle it. I mean, you have to laugh about it. I'm like, what am I gonna do? Sit there and cry? No. So I felt like, yeah, that was like the silver lining. I was like, I can totally do this because I don't care what anybody says. Like I never imagined that would be my mental space ever in my life, but it was the blessing. I was like, cool.
So this incumbent had recruited somebody to run against you. I mean, was it close?
Yeah, I think I won by four hundred votes. So not super close for our little one. And those local races are so small. I had no idea what was gonna happen. I had never been through this process before. I was like, this is just exciting. I don't know what's happening. I had no idea what was gonna happen at all.
And so your son was in high school?
Yeah.
And was he supportive?
Oh, yeah. He was like, cool, do whatever. Like, he's like, you do you. He was like, very well-known in the sports world. And his friends were supportive. Cause I was like, let's go get rid of masks and just focus on school. And so all the sports kids were like, yeah, go do it. And so, yeah, they were, all his friends were really supportive. It was fun. I thought it was a fun process. And so, and they were like, oh my gosh, you won. I was like, oh, what? Wild.
And I assume that you'd been paying more attention to the school board since that time you'd gone that one time?
No.
No.
Not really. Not like the in-depth, the budgetary stuff. No idea. It was more, I went that one time. I just worked up my courage for that. And then Palmer City Council, like all of Palmer businesses were trying to mandate that everybody had to do the same thing in their businesses. And so that's when Mayor Edna was actually the Palmer mayor. And I knew her, my, my dad and her actually did prison ministry way back in the day.
Anna DeRees.
Yep. So I had met her way back when. And so I just have known of her for forever. And so she was like, I should try and just come testify. And then, so I did that. And then had all these friends that were like, how do we get involved? Like we don't, nobody wants to run, but there's stuff that we can do to at least get involved in our communities. That's when I had told her, hey, I think we need to have some sort of school of learning the process for so many of us that have no idea how government. We know how it works and like, what you learn in school, but just like local government, I feel like people were not, especially if you're working and you're living your lives, you're just not as engaged. It's just, until, until it touches you.
I don't know what city council meetings like are in Palmer or Wasilla or the Matsu Borough Assembly meetings. But the Anchorage Assembly meetings, even today.
Yeah.
If I showed up and they hand me an agenda, I do not understand how to read that agenda. I have no idea. I have a master's degree.
Right. Right.
I don't know what this means.
Right.
Like I feel like.
Not user friendly.
No. And I think that there's a lot of hostility towards them because it just feels so elite. Like, how do you know what item you're on?
Right.
You're handing me a 36 page document with a bunch of like things that make no sense. It could go on for days.
Yeah.
It, it kills me.
Yeah.
Honestly, I think things are simpler here.
They are. I can tell you that for sure they are. And that was like, my hope was like, hey, if I can do this, anybody can do this, that's for sure. And on the school board, I just felt, cause I was very active on social media for like network marketing, for like business stuff. Like I had sold a bazillion things from all kinds of different companies. If I liked a product, I just signed up to join and then sell it to my friends. So like I had learned network marketing through social media stuff a lot. So I just feel like if I could just put things in the simplest of terms and explain things like that was like, oh, maybe this is what is my niche. Then I'll just learn and then I can help share with other people so that they don't have to go and research and do all the things and make it easier for people. But that's when I'd told Edna, like, let's do a school.
So what was it like being on the school board?
I loved it. It's hard. You're in your own community. You're all of a sudden making decisions that people either hate you for literally, or they're cheering you on. But we, I feel like you have a silent majority of your community. They're like, oh, you got us and we don't need to really stay.
By experience, it's like, I think this happens no matter what side you're on.
Yeah.
If your side wins, then those people are like, I can relax now.
Yeah.
I can go back to my life. And so the only people who are showing up are the people who hate you.
Yes.
And they're always there.
They're always there and they're always online.
Loud and they send you a email every day.
Yes.
And, and it does, it's psychologically, it is so, just a weird life experience.
It really is. So it was three years of that. I went from, the first year was like my learning year, learning, trying to learn as much as I could. And just like here, you're never gonna learn everything, but as much as I could. Second year I was vice president, third year I ended up being president. And we had a lot of controversial things in three years come down the pike that I had no idea was gonna come down the pike.
What was like the most controversial thing that came down the pike while you were president?
President, oh man, I remember if it was when I was president or whatever. We had the book situation.
So the book situation was like, I don't know, I heard it one time, it was hundreds and hundreds of books that wanted to be removed.
It was like 60. Some books. Yes, that was one of the things. And it was some parents that had brought up these concerns. I don't know if it started because they heard something nationally or they, there was a book fair that went on in the valley. I don't even know how it originally originated, but they brought up this list of books. And what we did was almost like a community task force where every board member got to appoint someone from their community. Plus it had librarians, it had teachers. And so it was a very mixed, politically, it was very much mixed. It wasn't.
Do y'all have liberal people in the valley?
We do. Oh, yeah. Yep. Yes, we definitely do. It's smaller pocket, but we do. When people were giving their opinions, that was actually the most feedback that we heard was how robust and thorough and diverse the conversation about the books were. But at the end of the day, they were doing the test, does it go against Alaska state statute for distributing pornography to children? That's what it was, the main gist of the, the task force. And so what the board did is we just followed the recommendation of that committee. And so if they said 100%, this needs to be removed, then it was removed. And there was only like six or seven books, I think, out of total that removed. The other ones were just shifted because some of those books did get in front of like little kids. They were in libraries that they shouldn't have been. And even the old librarian had no idea how it got there. It wasn't like it was there necessarily, like their fault. If they ordered one author, but it had a ton of books, sometimes they come in big crates.
Right.
And so, yeah, so a lot of those books just got shifted to make sure that they were just in their right age groups. And so it, then it went to court because you know ACLU had like four lawsuits while I was on the, the board. But we didn't lose, we didn't lose. The judge actually agreed with the process that it was very well vetted, thought out. And so now.
Well, six or seven books is nothing.
I know. At the end of the, and those committee members each read each and every one of those books. So they did them in chunks. Each meeting was like, we're going over these four books, but they had to read them.
So it's 90% of the books stayed on the shelves. Ninety, 90% of the books that had been, had a challenge brought against it. It was found that it was okay to stay.
Yep. It was the ones that we're 100% agreed on that got taken out.
Interesting. I feel like if, if, if it had been portrayed that way, that most of the books that are challenged remain on the shelf.
We put it out there, but I mean, people are gonna steal whatever narrative they want. They think they're book banners. But the thing is that the judge didn't disagree with us on those books. Here's the crazy part. One of those authors has now actually shifted their books to not be distributed to children. And now they're like adult only books. I'm like, okay, we weren't wrong. They shouldn't be given to children.
Right.
It's accessible in the, in the public library, but for school, like where's the educational value behind it? It was not that way. And there were some crazy gra, I saw some crazy graphics in those. But things, this is the thing is like, people have to realize, not everybody has evil intent, but things do happen if there's not processes that aren't set up for safeguards. And so like from that experience in the district just had, they just tightened up. How are the books coming in? How are they being vetted? So we never have to go through this process again. So sometimes things happen like this, but then we just fix the process and then we, yeah. So that, that's what came from that, but that was very much like, we had a few, five, six people come and just tell us how awful of human beings we were from. Like not allowing kids to read anything they wanna read every single meeting. And yeah, that's just the experience though, on any, on multiple scenarios. But I felt like it prepared me that I'm like, hey, this feels way easier than the school board, that's for sure. You're making giant budgetary decisions and helping craft law and all that as well. But your own community, like where it's, where you see these people in Fred Meyer and Walmart.
Let's talk about you getting here because you ran against David Eastman. And you're on judiciary with me. David Eastman was on judiciary with me. There's, I'm gonna tell you the truth. I didn't think you were gonna win. I didn't think you were gonna win because he'd won the primary decisively.
Yep.
And I had followed you. I was very, I was very interested. A lot of people were very interested in your race.
Yeah.
I was like, I think she's gonna lose, but she's gonna win next time.
Yeah. Everybody thought that, not just you.
Yeah.
The only people that didn't think that was my husband, my son and Lexi.
They thought you were gonna win.
Oh, yeah. And my little group of, my little prayer group of ladies that are like my age, my little mom's group, they were like, no, you got this. And my mom, like her little group, like it was a very small crew of people knew me that were like, no, we just feel like you're gonna win. But the thing is before the primary, I hadn't done all of the footwork yet.
But why not?
My signs hadn't come in yet, all the way. They weren't all the way done being built. So those were all the way up yet. Those weren't up yet, all, all my materials and the door knocking.
And is that because you suddenly decided to run against him? Or like, how did the decision come about that I'm gonna run against David Eastman?
My term was coming up, so it was a three-year term on the school board. It was coming up. I didn't feel like I wanna, I, I feel like I got done what I wanted to in the first two months that I won the first time. I was like, oh, we got rid of masks within two months of my first term of school board. I'm like, oh, I'm here for three years. So let's see.
Now what am I gonna do?
Now what's gonna happen? So now I just gotta learn and be a part of it, which I'm so thankful that I got to be. But, um, so just thinking like, okay, what am I gonna do next? Am I done here? What's gonna happen? And, um, you know, I had been praying about it. And so I had gotten a call from Rob Yount. He had also called me before on the school board as well and was like, hey, these things are coming open. Maybe if you don't, I will, but I think you should think about it. So just a few people that had reached out to plant the seed to be like, you should just think about it. And I'm like, okay, I'll think very carefully and thoroughly. And I didn't fully decide until the spring of that year. I, I've been thinking about it since the fall, but not till the spring.
You're Rob Yount's representative?
Yep.
And he's your senator?
Yep.
And so he could have run against David Eastman.
And he was still teetering with, he, cause he was thinking he was gonna run for a higher office. And he just wasn't set on what he was gonna maybe do, but he was like, I wanna make sure.
Did your decision to run against David Eastman help him decide to run for senator?
Yeah, I, I was like, I don't wanna be a senator. Like I didn't, I didn't, that was a four year, I don't know what I'm doing. But I don't know if it helped him or not, or if he already had made up his mind. I just, I didn't give anybody a solid like, oh, I'm gonna do this for a while. Because I wanted like 80,000 confirmations that I was supposed to do this before I did it. I was like, this is life changing. You gotta uproot your family. You gotta do this. Like, is this something that I'm supposed to do? And it wasn't till, yeah, like spring that I really felt, okay, I feel like I am supposed to do this.
I wanna ask about praying on it. And, and I'm gonna ask on it because I sat next to David Eastman for a long time. And I imagine that his family prayed a lot as well.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And so I guess it's more like a question in a situation where both sides.
Yep.
Are praying on it.
When we're both believing this is.
That God wants you to do this.
But this is my theory. It, I didn't, I didn't feel, if God tells you to do something, that doesn't always mean it's gonna come out and you're gonna win something. My belief system is when God tells you to do something and you really feel you're supposed to do it. The most important thing is that you're saying yes and doing it. Because you have no idea what you're gonna learn in that process and win or lose. He may be setting you up for something else that's better, but you never would have learned or been in the position for something else, had you not walked through that. It's like this faith journey where it's like, I felt like God was like, do it. But I didn't feel like he was like, do it, cause you're gonna win. It was just same thing for school board. I felt like you just say yes, you be obedient. And in my belief system is like, he is such a good God and he's a good dad. That's how I view the Lord is he's a good dad. He's never gonna tell you to do something that's gonna cause you to just have a harmful outcome. But he will walk you through anything, even if it feels that way. But so on this journey also, I didn't know, I didn't know if I was gonna win or lose, but I felt in my heart, I was just doing what he had me to do. And I didn't know for what purpose. And so that was my mindset. Win or lose. It was like, I'm sure that they were praying about it. They're supposed to do it too, but it's the same thing. It's like the outcome is the outcome, but.
We've heard a lot about his supporters being particularly aggressive. I think is the polite way of putting it.
Yeah.
Were they aggressively going after you?
Yes, very much. And it's not something like I even put on blast on, but I'm like, if people saw what my inboxes looked like or anything like that. It was just, I was going against their person that they believed is the best person for Juneau in Alaska. And a lot of the people that I had talked to one-on-one that were super supporters, they never followed the school board at all.
So they didn't.
Didn't realize, I'm like, hey, everything you're saying, I also stand for a lot of the same things. And that's what I told people. I was like, we probably believe in a lot of the same things, like no questions. I didn't like bad talking when I was out knocking doors. I just said, I feel like I can be effective and I feel like I can get stuff done. Like I just want a shot at it. Like that was, that was like my speech basically was like, hey, we're both conservative. I just feel like, you know, it's been there eight years. I don't know how much has been able to get done. And, but I would try to do it as like nicely as I could. And then I, my own self, I would never say anything bad. I was like, but I just felt like I've been effective on the school board. The community's been happy with me, like the majority of people that supported me were like, yes, you stood up for our kids. You stood up for parental rights, like we felt like you had our back. And so I was like, I feel like I stood up for some really good things. So there's my effectiveness and there's my proof. So I feel like I could do good here.
So you, were you endorsed by Moms for Liberty?
I don't think, I didn't have an endorsement, so.
But you're hard of Moms for Liberty?
No.
No.
Nothing with Moms for Liberty, but I went to an event in Palmer. I have friends that had started the valley chapter, which is what I've learned extremely different from the Anchorage chapter.
Okay.
Like very different people and priorities possibly, because anybody can start a chapter.
Okay. I just thought like, that would be tricky for Moms for Liberty to support you over David Eastman. Because in my stereotyped mind, they would like David Eastman.
Yeah, but a lot of the valley people that started that chapter are people that I've known personally for a long time. They're their friends. But yeah, they, they liked me as well. And the ones that I talked to too, was the same thing was on effectiveness. That was it. They were just like, I think that you could be really effective. They had a barbecue and like Nancy Dollstrom was there, Nick Beggage, everybody was there. They just had conservatives to come talk about parental rights. That was what the potluck was for. And so I went and I wasn't supposed to even be sitting up there, but they're like, oh, there's another candidate that showed up. We'll pull up a chair and you can sit here too and tell us what you think.
David was there?
Yep. He was there as well. So since I was there, they pulled up a chair, they, and so they just asked.
Did they all sit together?
No, we sat at opposite ends. They put the chairs.
And I guess I had asked that, had you had a relationship with David Eastman? Had you ever talked to him before?
No, not really. He just texted once when he heard I was gonna run and asked if I wanted to go to coffee, but he hadn't announced he was gonna run yet. So I just said, are you gonna run? And he said, yeah, not till after spring, cause session was still going on. I was like, okay. But then we never met or anything like that. Cause yeah, no. I know people that are really good friends with him and his family's got super cute kids. They're very, very outgoing and sweet. Like his kids have really great manners. And so I've seen them at events and they always come up and they're like, hi, Miss Jubilee, like super sweet kids. But yeah, no relationship prior. Even when I was on the school board and I had a relationship with my shower, I've known Shelley Hughes since before she was in politics. Just from living in the valley, knowing who her kids are. Kathy Tilton, same thing. I've known her for forever.
And did you know Jesse Sumner?
Yes. That's how I knew Rob and Jesse is from real estate, because they're both builders. So I have had like builders meetings with clients. A lot of times someone wants to build a house, we interview three or four different builders. So that's how I knew Rob initially was I've had clients that had interviewed for possible building of homes. And so that was the extent of how I knew him really. And my broker has known him for forever. So she actually, through the grapevine, she's the one that was like, you should call Jubilee.
So what's your experience of him like in Juneau? I know it's been, I mean, we, actually I'd say at this point, we've been through a lot already.
I know. It's been wild, but.
It's been a busy, a really busy first two months.
It has been. I have thoroughly enjoyed it. I will say that much. Having my kids here and my kids like loving being here and being able to have my mom here. And my husband comes down like almost every other weekend because he was watching my son's basketball trip.
Your son's still, where is your son right now?
He's in Arizona right now.
Okay.
He was doing a post grad league. And so he, yeah, back and forth as well. And so he's possibly playing for a Tucson college next year. That was his hope was to in between and get pulled up. And so my husband would pop around and come down here, then work, then go see his tournaments and then come back. He doesn't mind flying, so it's worked out great.
You're not a flyer?
And I, even though I work for airlines, I just, I hate turbulence. So flying's not my favorite thing to do, but I will do it.
Gotcha.
But yeah, so I, like I said, different worlds from being on the school board. The one thing I hate about politics is people are like Democrats versus Republicans. And then you have a title and then they're like, those evil humans versus these evil humans. And that's just not the way I've ever lived my life or I've ever labeled people or I've ever looked at people. Like ever since I was little, I may have went to like Christian school and all the things, but I've always had a variety of friends of all different walks of life, different belief systems. And I just, I love people. Like that's always been who I am. So that's how I was even on the school board. I mean, I agree with you, but like even the people that were coming to yell at us and call us horrible humans. Like the lens I would try and look at them through was like, they must have something really hard going on in their life. Or there's something that's like, there's a reason that this emotion is coming out. I once too came, I didn't yell at them, but I stood up. So they're participating in the process. Yay, good for them. I'm excited about that. about that. But never like this person's just an evil human being. And so I guess like my probably wish that I could do for people is like break down these barriers of communicating. Like, they may not believe in the same things we do politically, but I don't come down here and view people on the opposite side politically to me as horrible human beings. And so it's like, you know, like not being here, but you hear that so much from the layman, I think, back home, not being participating in the process is, oh my gosh, everybody in Juneau is just or this, or that.
We are similar and that we're both fairly new to politics. I think the big eye opener for me, and I get in trouble for talking about this, but I know that there is a lot of disagreement and conflict in the Republican Party itself. There's a lot of disagreement and, and conflict within the Democratic Party itself.
Yeah.
Meaning like, it's not a, everybody sitting here agrees and everyone's happy about anything that's happening when we have any sort of meeting. And if there's that much conflict and disagreement amongst ourselves, there's some of us that probably have a lot in common with the people who have a lot of conflict and disagreement over here.
Right.
And it's not clear cut. The name, the, the letter after your name really doesn't tell you anything.
No, it doesn't. I'm like, we're all humans and we actually have a lot more in common than we don't have in common. And just viewing politics through that lens, I'm not a fan of politics, to be honest. I'm like, yeah, I'm sitting here, but it's not like, oh my gosh, this is my passion. I am a fan of like, loving people and bringing solutions that would hopefully bring like.
You, I've seen your name as the primary co-sponsor to tons of bills, but would you say that you have a bill that's your priority? Or is there a policy decision that you most want to have your imprint on?
I didn't come down here with one targeted item. So I told people, I knew, I feel like coming off of a school board and how, learning how the process works, even just on a smaller local level, that I feel like I was like, reality check myself. Like, I have to come and learn these processes. And I need to also learn who these people are that I'm working with. Like.
Right.
Just be a student. And I feel like whatever it is that I'm supposed to bring to the table will come.
Oh, I.
I'll find it.
And hey, I got, when I got elected, the first thing people said is like, what are your bills gonna be? And I remember thinking, oh my God, I, I have no idea. I just worked my ass off to get elected.
Right.
I have to have bills now? Like, I was like, I don't know.
I'm like, here's all those things I love and I stand for, but there's so many of them.
Flash forward till now.
Yeah.
Oh, I know my legislative agenda.
Yeah.
It took me two years.
Yep.
But it was like, you talk through it, you listen, you watch.
Yep.